The applicants here, there are four members here today rather than the typical five. We have a couple of people who aren't here. Just want to let you know that should a decision be made unanimous, of course, it will go one way or the other. Should it be three to one, it will go whatever way it is. But if the decision is split two and two, then the motion will not carry. It's just that simple. Now, if you're, that's the case and you're concerned about that, we can certainly let you come on back. It'll be next meeting. Or, you know, it'd be your choice. I've been involved in ZBAs for a long time and I've yet to see something like that happen, but it can't. So I just want to let you know that. So it'll be your decision and we'll move on with things. Okay, well, let's start off by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, item number three on our agenda is the approval of this agenda. Are there any comments, changes that need to be made?
Staff does not have any changes to the agenda.
Okay, see now, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the approval, approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Support.
We have support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any negative? Say no. Okay, next thing on the agenda is number four, public comment of any non-agenda items. If there's anybody here who has something that does not deal with anything on our agenda, you have a comment, now is the time to do it. And seeing none, we'll move on to the number five, which is the approval of the minutes of September 23rd. Are there any discussion, any changes, anything needed? In that case, I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from September 23rd, 2025.
And support.
Support.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, that carries. Item number six, it's a frontage variance for 3815 and 3841 North Third Street. Go ahead and you can let us know what you can say about it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The property owner, Eric Weathers, is requesting a variance to allow for the land redescription of two properties resulting in a parcel that would have 119 feet of road frontage while the ordinance requires there to be a minimum of 200 feet of road frontage. Visual of the two properties and their current configuration is provided on this slide. Michigan courts have provided and applied five principles for a variance. These standards of review are outlined here on this slide. Over the next few slides, I'll provide a summary of each standard against this frontage variance request. First criterion to consider is unique physical circumstances. The applicant has indicated that there are no physical limitations affecting the property such as straining concerns, et cetera. However, it should be noted that there are several unplanned parcels directly across the street that have less than the 200 feet of frontage required by the zoning ordinance. Frontage on nearby properties includes parcels with 165 feet of frontage, 132 feet, 110 feet, and several with 82 and a half feet of frontage. Second criterion to consider is whether conformance is unnecessarily burdensome. Use is currently being made of the property and denial of the variance would not prevent the property owner from continuing the use. A redescription of the properties as proposed by the applicant will not be permitted unless a variance from the frontage requirements is granted. That said, it is possible to re-describe 3841 North Third Street so that the existing frontage of 165 feet north of 3815 North Third Street remains unchanged. So rather than reducing the frontage of 119 feet per the applicant's request, which is illustrated in the visual on the top, right inside of your screen, the existing 165 feet of frontage could be retained, reducing the amount of relief necessary if a variance were to be granted. The alternate relief would still eliminate the non-conforming, non-contiguous road frontage while also not decreasing the frontage any further. A visual of this alternate relief is provided in the bottom right-hand corner of this slide. The third criterion to consider is substantial justice. So in researching past ZBA decisions regarding variance relief from the frontage requirements for a boundary line adjustment, Plaine Department staff identified two cases that may help the ZBA consider past precedents, and a summary has been provided in the report from staff. The next criterion to consider is whether the request is a self-created hardship, the applicant's interest to re-describe the two properties is what is creating this request. Hypothetically, the applicant could seek to acquire additional frontage from an adjacent parcel to make up the required 200 feet of road frontage. Although the frontage would no longer satisfy the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance, it could be argued that the applicant is bringing 3841 North Third Street closer to compliance by proposing to eliminate the non-contiguous frontage component the parcel currently presents, which is non-conforming. Last criterion to consider is regarding the health, safety, and welfare of others. If the variance is granted, it is not expected that the request would negatively impact the health, safety, and welfare of the public. On this slide is a summary of the findings of fact for both approval and denial of a Then last, are possible board motions, which include, one, the ZBA approves the variance request, and if the ZBA so chooses this motion, staff requests that a condition be attached that all requirements in the township's land redescription process are satisfied by the property owner. Two, the ZBA denies the variance request. Or three, the ZBA approves alternate variance relief. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, see now, would the property owner like to step forward and speak to this?
I'm Eric Weathers, property owner, along with my wife, Maria. Do you have any specific questions in general you'd like me to address, or would you just like me to present the case?
Present your case, and then we'll ask some questions, unless somebody has one thing right off the bat. Okay, see now, please go ahead.
We originally purchased the property in 2000, August of 2001, and it was already zoned as two separate parcels, although it was just one property. At the time, we've used it as one particular parcel. The home and buildings are on the smaller parcel, and there are natural tree lines, there are tree lines that create natural boundaries to, so to stand anywhere in the yard, it's very obvious that the property goes from there to there and then back to there. The survey lines show something different with the second, larger property seriously encroaching, so to the fact that it pretty much just encircles the house and driveway. And as such, it's really not beneficial for the 3815 parcel or the 3841 parcel. So what we are trying to do is to change the official property lines essentially to go from tree line to tree line that would still give the larger, yes, 119 feet of frontage, but give 3815 the full natural property lines. Because of the thick trees, there's really no access from the larger property, the back property, to the smaller. So in a sense, we're just trying to bring property lines, surveyed property lines into what we kind of call reality.
Okay, I'm going to look at this, I'm looking at this, the 3815.
Yes.
Is that a home and a barn, I believe, on that?
Yes, there's a home, a barn, and a pole barn garage.
Okay, and is that where you're residing now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and then on the 3841, there's a building. What is that?
That's a new home construction. My son built that home. So, and since, since there's another home on there, and my son bought, built it for his wife and his children, at this time, it just seemed to make good sense to officially alter the boundary lines.
And basically, then, the 119-foot of frontage is more or less be his access to that home. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we're also looking at several properties that are more or less across the street from you that have smaller than 200-foot frontage.
Yes, three of them are, I believe, 82 and a half feet. I don't have my numbers right in front of me, I have them in the packet, but yes, there are a good number of them that are already smaller than 200 feet. And the 119 would still be larger than several of them.
Am I correct in assuming there's no intention of doing any other building on either of these sites?
That is correct.
If they were to do something like that and decided, oh, we're going to build a little bit extra, they would have to come to the planning commission to do that, is that correct?
Right, and they'd have to bring a street in to do it. If they retain just 119, that'd be wide enough for a public street right away, or a private street, if they wanted to further develop that back acreage.
But if, my, okay, yeah, but my question is, if they decided they wanted to develop further, put homes back in that wooded area behind that, they would have to come to the planning commission to do so?
Planning commission and the township board.
Okay. And then that would either be approved or denied. Any other questions from the board? Go ahead, Fred.
Question, how will your son access his property that he's building on?
The 119 feet of frontage already has a driveway on it.
Okay, it does have now.
It does have, it does have a driveway on there now.
Thank you.
And maybe to Jim, this is basically one piece of property with two different property numbers, correct?
Yeah, before the, our ordinance now currently requires that your 200 feet be contiguous.
Yes.
Earlier, it did not require that, and then people would split these U-shaped parcels.
Okay.
That's no longer considered conforming, so you have two, you already have a non-conforming parcel in that you don't have contiguous frontage. That's why your, that's why Colton presented an alternate of saying you could keep the 165 to the north and delete the area to the south, and you would still grant a partial variance. That's, that's the alternate variance, I think, that Colton presented to the board.
Okay.
But nowadays, you can't do that anymore, so now you just need to see if there's any other.
Are there any other questions from the board? Anything that needs clarification or from the homeowner? Then I'm going to ask for a motion on this. Oh, I'm sorry, any comments from the, I'm sorry, from the, any comments from the, would you please step up to the mic and state your name for the record?
My name's Craig Wedham, and that's my wife Elaine. This property was originally my father-in-law's, actually, my wife's great-great-grandfather. It was his farm. And then my father-in-law, when he passed away, you folks, that land was all zoned agricultural. You folks made me change the zoning on it to be rural residential, and then I had to pay for that, that pleasure of changing it. So it cost me money to do it, to turn it into rural residential. And that was, you made me, Ashmore Township made me do that, or us. So anyways, we did that, and then when my father-in-law passed away, we had to sell the estate. So we took, there was 42 acres there, and we divided that by three for each of my wife and her brother and her sister. And so, we did that, and we plotted that all out according to what you folks told us we had to have done, so I had a surveyor come out and do that. And then we paid him, and there was something on that survey that was not acceptable to you folks, so I had to get the pleasure of paying the surveyor a second time to get that property surveyed. Now, we had that surveyed in such a fashion as what it was, as three parcels, all right? And it was kind of a painful process, as it was, but we got that done, and you folks told me at that time that there could be no changes or no boundary moves until after 10, a minimum of 10 years. Okay? That was your request, your Ashmore Township told us that, and there was no way that the boundary lines on that property could be changed after, until after 10 years minimum. Now...
It was done in 2017, 2017.
Okay, so that was your request. Now, my problem is, you have these rules, and then you break them, and then you change them to suit whatever you want. You know, and we got a minimum of two years before this brownie line can be changed, you know, and part of me, I don't have a problem with what they're doing, but I said, my part of the problem is, why did Ashmore Township issue a building permit on a piece of property that didn't pass the building code? And besides that, where they put that house is sitting right on top of an underground river, or right by it. Did anybody pay any attention to what the groundwater contamination is going to be? Because that river comes across the front of our property, down the side, you get about down that, what they put in as a driveway, about 200, 300 feet, 400 feet, that water's down there, because I drove those stakes down there, and you drive them T-posts, whatever they are, about five, six, that last two foot, that post just went zoom. So there's water down there about four foot. And I don't know exactly where it all goes, but I know that house is sitting on, very, very close to where that water, that underground stream goes, because it goes there around that lowland that was there, because that was all green, and it goes around the nose of that into the front and the back corner back there, because where the other corner of the property, because that was divided in three pieces, and I don't, my wife has a plat thing, but I can tell you roughly where that is. But you go back there and put a stake in there, and you drive that down, and the only reason I was putting stakes in is because it was where the survey markers were at. Okay, because we had the land surveyed, they put, I had stakes run 200 foot on both sides of the property.
I'm sorry, you have 10 seconds to wrap up your comments. You get four minutes.
Well, that's all, I just, but I don't understand how you can make these rules and then totally ignore them and change them for whatever. And I understand these people are in a problem, but he built this house for his son, but the house is for sale. So if his son's going to live it, why is it for sale? Obviously, it's a little more than somebody can handle. You know, I mean, it's over a million dollars, they're asking for the house, which is...
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I could address some of the issues. Basically, when somebody comes in for a land division, yes, under state law, it's not, it's not necessarily a local ordinance, but state law is, it does limit further divisions, but within that law, you can make lot line adjustments, and it would not constitute a split. So if you went to the alternate variance, moved the one lot line south, you haven't created any more splits, you still have the same number of parcels. So I don't believe there's a violation of local ordinance or state law by moving that lot line. As to whether or not the property was buildable, it had the requisite frontage because it was a legally non-conforming lot prior to the change in the ordinance. So that addresses the two questions I can address. Where the water's at on the property, I have no comment, I don't know anything about it.
And again, would it fulfill the state requirements if we went with the first proposal as opposed to the alternate, either one?
Well, I, it would, if you grant the variance, it would meet state law requirements for buildable parcel, because you'd be granting the variance. I think the question you have to answer is whether or not within granting the variance, you're always to try to grant the minimum necessary for substantial justice. And I think that's what Colton presented to you, in other words...
Yeah, but my question simply was, either one fulfills the state?
Either one.
Yeah, okay.
My understanding of the Land Division Act, my understanding of the building code, there's no violation.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Is there any other comments?
I have, I have a question. The property with 200 feet of frontage, what year was that created? The one in the middle?
I believe that that happened in 1997.
Okay, so it's not part of these 2017 splits?
No.
They were two parcels, then?
Yeah.
At this time, I'm asking for a motion.
Colton, can you go to the motion page? I'll make a motion to support the variance approval for the reasons indicated.
Are you looking at the alternate or the...
Um, no.
The first one with the 119-foot?
Yeah.
We have a motion, is there support? Can I support this? Okay, thank you, Fred. Have a motion and support. At this time, I'd like to do a roll call. Fred?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Dusty?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
It's for the variance with the 119-foot frontage for the driveway. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm getting tired of this. Okay, where am I next up? My agenda, thank you, I've got too many papers. This is for a frontage variance of Houston, and that's 9600 block of West L Avenue.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The property owner, Scott Huestead, is requesting a variance to allow a non-conforming parcel with inadequate frontage to be rendered buildable to construct a single-family home on it. The subject parcel currently has 60 feet of road frontage, where the ordinance currently requires there to be a minimum of 200 feet of road frontage. Any splits prior to the 1965 ordinance provision requiring the 200-foot minimum frontage requirement are considered to be grandfathered. Since the split occurred sometime after the frontage ordinance provision was adopted, the parcel is currently deemed unbuildable. A visual of the subject property is provided on this slide. Again, the Michigan courts have applied five principles for variance. These standards are outlined on this slide, and I'll review each one against this variance The first criterion again to consider is unique physical circumstances. Staff is not aware of any unique physical limitations or conditions preventing compliance. Consider surrounding properties on West L Avenue as there are several unplanned parcels within one quarter of a mile from the property in question that has less than 200 feet of road frontage. Frontage nearby parcels include approximately 32 feet, 104 feet, 150 feet, and 169 feet, all of which are improved with single-family homes on them. It could be argued that the current frontage of 60 feet is harmonious with the existing character of the area. Moving on to the second criterion, which is whether conformance is unnecessarily burdensome. Reasonable options for compliance are available by continuing to operate the property in its present state for agriculture without a dwelling on it. Uses presently being made of the property and denial of the variance would not prevent continuing the current use. It may be possible to bring the property into conformance with respects to road frontage without a variance, as the applicant could potentially explore acquiring additional frontage from an adjacent parcel. The third criterion to consider is substantial justice. So in researching past ZBA decisions regarding variance relief from the township's road frontage requirements, Plaine Department staff identified two cases that may help the ZBA consider past precedents, which are both included in the report from staff. The fourth criterion to consider is whether the request is a self-created hardship. So are the conditions or circumstances, circumstances which resulted in the variance request created by actions of the applicant or a previous landowner. The division of the property into its current configuration was at the discretion of the property owner at the time, and therefore, it could be argued to be self-created. The last criterion to consider is regarding the health, safety, and welfare of others. If a variance is granted, it is not expected that the request would negatively impact the health, safety, and welfare of the public. On this slide is a summary of the findings of fact for both approval and denial of the Then lastly, is possible board motions. Possible board motions. Board motions include, the ZBA approves the variance request, allowing the property to become buildable to accommodate a single-family home, or two, the ZBA denies the variance request.
Are there any questions? At this point, I would like to have comments from anyone here, the property owner, like to describe what's planned. Please step up to the microphone, state your name.
How are you doing today? I'm Scott Huestead from Houston Farms. I've owned the property since 1982. The gentleman that owned it before owned the house to the west, and he continued to live there after I bought it, so he had this split before I, but I purchased it from him, and he split the property. There's another house to the east, which is probably 50 feet from my line, and the one to the west is 40 feet from my line, so there's no additional frontage available for my section, the 60-foot that I have. So, we're just... So, we're just, we've had it for, um, since eighty-two, and, uh, we're getting up to where we're gonna retire. And to get somebody else to go in there and farm, they'd probably need a house on it. So, we're just trying to make it easily for somebody else to continue. And also, that, um, it's kind of conforms with the townships, like, they wanted larger parcels than the western third of the township, I heard previously. And this is a fourteen-acre parcel, which one house on there would, it'd be a nice parcel for somebody to have with one house. But, right now, I don't see where there's a way to get additional frontage, because there's houses both sides of the driveway. And if you guys got any other questions?
Is this farm being used right now?
Yes.
And what are you growing there?
Uh, apples. Yeah, it has about eight acres of apples, and then it has, uh, about five acres of open ground that we can grow corn or, uh, pumpkins or something like that for our farm market. This year it was fallow, but it's, has apples, yes, is a permanent crop.
Now, the width of that little frontage there, it's sixty feet, correct?
Yes.
Just so I can, I, I know I heard it, and I just want to verify.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jody, I think I might ask the same thing here. Again, sixty feet would not even be enough to have a road in there, should they decide to break that up and make it a...
Well, our transportation and mobility ordinance allows a fifty-foot wide easement for private streets.
But again, as I said before, if they decided to split this up, it would have to come before the planning commission and the board.
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to clear that up. Anyone else has any comments on this particular situation?
I have a question for the applicant. Have you considered approaching the neighbor on your northwest corner to get some frontage on L due north of your west end?
Um, north of the west end? Oh, it's, it's on the south side of the road.
Well, west of ninety-five, or is it ninety-six, seventy-seven, West L? The next parcel over, I don't know its address.
Of course, it wouldn't be continuous.
But it could...
The one with the house on it to the west?
I can't tell from this aerial if there's a, a house on that next one. I just see they have quite a bit of frontage.
Um, you mean if I got, well, what it is, it's like my driveway, and then their house is forty feet?
And then there's another parcel that looks to be wooded. Can you see it on the screen?
Oh, I see what you're saying, Jody.
Yeah.
I don't see it.
Just the wood, in other words, the woods, yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah, that's, he owns that right now, and he owns sixty acres there. He's not, I don't think he's, Mitchell's, I don't think he's really interested in selling. Because he has sixty acres with that, and that would reduce his frontage. And he doesn't have that much frontage there.
That would mean the entire sixty acres, or have to have that split, a little portion. Okay, I can understand that.
Yeah, I think he has about three hundred feet there, and it goes to his sixty.
Are there any other questions from the board? Any other comments? Seeing none, I might ask for a motion.
I don't think you took public comment yet on this one.
Pardon?
Public comment.
Didn't I ask for public comment?
I thought you asked for comments from anybody, including the applicant, but...
Yeah.
Oh.
So, just make sure...
All right, is there anyone who has, sitting out here that has comments about this? Yes, no, no, okay. Well, okay. I, yeah, no, that's part five, it's...
My name's Gordon Belby, I live across the street from this parcel, and, uh, we live on a fifteen-acre parcel, and then own the adjacent parcel to that. And, um, I don't see any problem with having a home on fifteen acres. That seems like a very reasonable thing to me, so, uh, I don't have any objection to them building, or making it buildable anyway. So, that would be, that would be okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there anyone on the board, have anything else, anybody else? Now I'm looking for a motion. Then I'm going to make a motion that we grant this variance by the fact that this was not self-created, it was the way it was when he purchased it. I see no way in the world that this is gonna affect public safety. It is a unique lay of the land, and asking the person to purchase another piece of property to fulfill that would be very burdensome. So I'm, I, with those reasons, I move that we support and grant this variance. I'm looking for a support on this.
Support.
We have a motion and support. I'll do another roll call. Mr. Gould?
Yes.
Mr. Van Plank?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Jackham, yes. Motion carries. I think we're gonna move into, any other updates or business? Jody, you got something for us?
I do not.
Anything else? Move on to number nine, which is adjournment. I move that we adjourn. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I don't think anybody's opposed. No, we're good.